So, welcome everyone. This is a Board of Selectmen's meeting. Today is December 15th. It is 4:00 PM. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The first order of business, gentlemen, is to discuss the, some dates revolving around New England Farms hearing dates for, I believe it's the tanks, the use of the land use permit for the fuel storage tanks. And just so you gentlemen know, I was talking with Ms. Hebert, Town Administrator. It looks like we will be scheduling our next selectmen's meeting for January 12th. And we can go out to January, the following week, January 19th. Looks like it works pretty good for that public hearing. If that's okay with the board and for us to make that announcement.
Okay.
We're having a month off?
No, we're going to, well, yeah, kinda with the holidays, Dave. It's a little, I mean, we might schedule something else in between, but I'm saying for the next selectmen's meeting.
Alright.
It is, it is possible, although Ms. Hebert and I have been discussing some wrapping up a few smaller issues, the storm water down there where Mr. Wonah did the River Park and project and things of that nature. Let's start discussing that with the folks that are coming in to do that project, seeing how we've never been updated on that project. And a few other smaller issues, maybe we'll do some house cleaning on those smaller issues instead of taking up time in our regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting. So, unless of course, either one of you two gentlemen have something that you would like to take up between now and January 12th. But you got two weeks coming up, Mr. DeRoche, at a holiday week. So it's gonna be kinda difficult to get people in and information in with people, I guess, would still be taking vacations, going out and seeing family and things of that nature. So it might be difficult. So that's the only reason why I said January 12th, January 5th would have been the next date, but because of the holidays, tough.
Yeah. Oh, no, I understand completely. How are we planning on handling the public hearing aspect of this meeting?
It has to be Zoom.
Has to be Zoom? Okay.
Unless something dramatic happens in the Commonwealth of Mass with a pandemic, Mrs. DeRoche, we would all have to assume that we're doing Zoom public hearing, right?
Okay. Well, you know, and I know it's been an ongoing situation of since March. I just didn't know what the official standing was right now about how we can handle it, but Zoom is fine by me.
I think the state, I think the state changed some rules on public hearings. Is that correct, Ms. Hebert?
Yeah, yeah. So essentially, the only option we have right now is we have to have a Zoom meeting. Initially, all of the public hearings were told to the end of the state of emergency, but since that's still ongoing, recently, the governor signed off on some legislation that ended the toll on December 1st. And since this came about in the middle of the toll, we have 60 days from December 1st, from December 1st to have that hearing. So essentially, any, any date you pick through the end of January would work.
Okay. January 12th is fine by me.
January, January 19th, Mr. DeRoche.
Oh, January 19th?
That's for the public hearing for Tony's, for the New England Farms, or whatever they're calling it all.
Alright, very good. And that, that'll be at what time? Have they determined the time yet, or are we?
Well, we determine, I guess we're gonna determine a time. I, I'd probably like to stick with what we do with the Board of Selectmen's maybe for, but I don't, I don't know how well that's gonna go over with the public. We can disclose a time at a later date, but we have, we have some rules around advertising for public hearings as well. I don't know what that is, 15 days or 30 days. I don't exactly what it is. The Board of Selectmen don't do a lot of public hearings. But Ms. Hebert, do you have any inclination if it's 30 days?
Yeah, typically, you have to post it two weeks prior each week in the newspaper for those two consecutive weeks. So I'd say the earlier the better. I know when we did the land use license hearing for PJ Keating, I think we picked 6 o'clock for a time. I don't know if that works. It's kind of a medium, you know, to accommodate people.
Yeah, we may need to, we may need to kick it to 6:00 PM to, so that the public can give their input.
Just by coincidence, I was reading about land use licenses before our meeting today, and it says, "Not less than seven days prior to a public hearing, it must be advertised in a newspaper in the English language." So, and that's whether the local fire official approves or disapproves the application. So I'd check it out again, but that's what I read.
So preliminary, gentlemen, for, it gives us 15 days to, to put this out there. So preliminary speaking for tonight's purposes is January 19th at 6:00 PM. An okay date and time?
Very good.
Selectmen Wonah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That will be the date and time, Ms. Hebert. Can you send out the notifications that that's what we plan in case somebody from the, the other side has, has problems with that date?
I will.
Thank you. Next gentleman, Ms. Hebert said there's a couple of requests for CARES Act updates or proposed expenditures. I see that Ms. Kosker is here. She's one of the individuals that would like to discuss some spending out of CARES Act with the Board of Selectmen. Welcome, Ms. Kosker.
Hello, thank you. Yes. My request is in regards to getting a software called NearMap. NearMap is a tool used by many assessors, especially a lot in the Commonwealth right now, to alleviate the challenges we are being faced, of course, with the pandemic and not actually going out to physically examine property as we had historically. The software offers a quick and convenient solution by providing frequently updated, high-resolution aerial photography, and it's done about twice a year versus GIS. It's very compatible to Oliver, if any of you are aware of that, through the Mass GIS state website where there are layers and it's stagnant aerial photography. That's through the state websites, about two or three years old. With this particular software, they would actually provide files twice a year at different times. I believe they said in the spring and in the fall. I'm not really sure what times, but in any event, the reason for my request is, of course, this is a great way to get reliable data, new growth for the town, which adds, of course, to getting more monies for the town and things such as decks, pools, additions that aren't permitted or aren't captured, or anything relatively new within less than a year turnaround. So it's almost like actual time can be captured. And communities such as Taunton and Attleboro have been big advocates for this. And there was a study done by the city of Taunton where he actually turned around and recuperated the cost of this particular software within a period of about four months by just really going out there and looking at the differences and picking up all this growth.
Ms. Kosker, can I, can I ask a question? That's, it, it seems relevant to me that the question that needs to be asked is that the Board of Selectmen, when we voted and when we started doing CARES Act was, it was not to be used for budgetary items, and this appears to be a budgetary items as it's gonna be software, which will need, they've been to have a licensing fee and upgrades and everything else. So is that first true, that this would be something that you would have to go into your budget in the following year? And is it?
It is, and other communities have successfully got it, gotten this inception year covered by CARES. But to support that, yes, we want to talk numbers initially. The inception cost for basically the 3D viewer, the aerial obliques, and the artificial intelligence is approximately $10,500 per year. For the subsequent years, it would be that fee, but if you don't want to take away the artificial intelligence, it'd be about $6,000 a year. But keep in mind, with this software being proactive in a post-pandemic world with things such as what I have budgeted for the assessors for the cyclical inspections that are required by the DOR, they're looking to actually accept these types of inspections to count for their purposes. So being proactive, looking at it now for the future, I don't think it's a bad investment for the town. It's, I, it is, it does not fall under the category, as you said, Kevin, yes, it would be subsequent costs to the town.
Yeah, so Kelly, I mean, I get it, great, right? First $10,000 is, is covered by the CARES Act, but not in subsequent years. And the Board of Selectmen did put that directive out there to everybody for CARES Act money not to be coming and reoccurring in following years. And in the budget matter of fact, we spoke directly to the school department about doing such a thing. I, I think to save $10,000 and not have this well-vetted at-town meeting via an article is not the greatest idea. I, I think that it's basically software that can, you know, we'll call it the eye in the sky that we can be, you know, looking around people's properties and we say it's gonna generate revenue for the town, which is another word for saying, "We're gonna increase taxes on you because we didn't see that you had a pool in your yard, but now I'm gonna tax you on your pool." And that's who's gonna be paying for is the taxpayers ultimately all over again. So, you know.
But that is the fundamental of the mission statement of what assessors do. I mean.
No, I understand that. That's what assessors do, but you know, hopefully with the vaccine out and we're gonna spend this money and there may not be a need for the assessor no longer to go out in the field and do, i.e. their job, or hire somebody else to go out and do the job. I just had a gentleman on my front lawn two weeks ago. You must have sent him out there and he came in and did a measurement, asked for permission. I said, "More than happy to let you measure my house." So they just came out and you have tri-annual certification now, $26,000 in your budget and management consultant, another $12,500. Is any of that money going away in lieu of this to extra $10,000?
It could. The $12,500 could go away. That's allocated for the cyclical inspections, as I mentioned before, that in the future may turn into being accepted, done through the softwares from the Department of Revenue. I can't attest to that, but that's the, if you think about it, that is the way the world is moving. I, I don't know if that would actually take place for real, but I am a true believer that it is. And you realize the assessors are a two-staff office. I know that it's outsourced where we actually, the boots on the ground. Basically, my statutory obligations don't really allow me to do a lot of boots on the ground, to be honest with you, with only one admin in the office at a time. With that being said, when the outsourcing is done and it's considered that an expenditure aside, as you're looking at the budget, if the town hired, let's say, a lister, it would be on the salary side. So it's basically, it's, it's optics and how you're looking at it in regards to the bottom line of expenditure.
Sure. It, it's outsourced. It's been outsourced by numerous municipalities for the management consultant. Isn't the, isn't, that's in your budget every year, but isn't this tri-annual certification technically the law that every three years you have to do these researchs?
No, every 10 years is the cyclical. The tri-annual certification, our last one in fiscal 2020, rather than an interim adjustment, basically is when the Department of Revenue comes down and it's more in-depth with what we communicate with data in regards to our statistics and our sales analysis and our income and expense, where they really do a real thorough analysis and take a look if we are actually meeting the minimum assessment requirements as put out by the Department of Revenue. In the interim years, it's a little bit less, it's not as formal, and it's a little less direct communication with representatives from the DOR.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have any, you have any comments based on that discussion?
We are departing from what we agreed to do. As far as the budgetary items, that is a hurdle that, in a little bit of a door that we're gonna open up concerning CARES Act money. So this is really the first I've heard of this situation and how it's been brought to me.
I agree.
You know, at this time, I'm, you know, I agree with Mr. Gaspar on this one. So.
Mr. Wonah?
I tend to agree. I mean, look, at the end of the day, we've gotta, we've gotta give the staff the tools they need to do their job. And I think the job is evolving over time, how you assess the properties, either by on foot or with software. You know, I think that's gonna leave that up to the assessors to decide how they wanna address that. But I think that is, you know, remaining inconsistent with the scope that was set before I came on board. I mean, I've gotta honor that in support of you two gentlemen. Sorry, Kelly, but it's not an issue of the application. It's just the, the process, from my perspective.
Understandably so. But on another note, would it be a possibility, I know these upcoming town meetings are probably gonna be really limited to spending, but is the assessors put forth an article to try to attempt to get this particular software and tools available? Would the Selectmen be opposed to that?
Ms. Kosker, I, I would, as I just said, this is probably something that would warrant, you know, the people, the taxpayers, to weigh in on this and put it as an article on the warrant and let that probably be vetted at that point with the Board of Selectmen when we're reviewing the warrants to get people familiarity with what we're doing.
Absolutely. Sorry about my dog. He hears somebody at the, I'm so sorry.
And attempted to do, and then bring it to town meeting, and then, you know, we have our right to speak our mind on however we feel at that time. So.
Understandably so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Alright, thanks. Sorry about the dog.
No problem. Happy holidays.
Bye, thank you.
Bye. And I believe Chief Gallagher is here with a request for CARES Act funding. Welcome, Chief Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Very good. And you?
I'm well, thank you. Before Ms. Hebert and I talk about the, the future of our testing program, I'd like to take 30 seconds and just bring you up to speed on some numbers. As you know, last week, we had a very successful community testing program. Our eighth at the schools on Saturday. We tested 350 people, and so far, with about 10 results outstanding, we found 20 new positive cases for a positive percentage rate of 5.7%. Above 5% is problematic, but our report from the state for the last two weeks, we were in the mid-sevens. So I think it's kinda consistent with what the, the state is saying. More importantly, and we found this out just today, I have a total number of tests to date, and I think it may come as a surprise to a lot of people. We provide three different types of tests. The antibody testing, which we administer to the school staff and town hall employees, town employees on a regular basis. The rapid antigen test, and then the nasal PCR test that goes off to the lab. We have administered 652 antibody tests, 880 rapid antigen tests, and 3,052 nasal swab tests since the middle of September for a total of 4,584 tests administered so far during the pandemic. That, that's, that number surprised me. I didn't expect it to be that high. We're, we're so into the swing of things, sometimes we forget to look at our batting average. But I just wanna take a minute to thank Heather Sylvia from the Council on Aging, who's really taken over our registration operations at our testing clinics. The folks from EMA have been fabulous. They're there every single time we need them, earlier than we ask, and they stay later than we ask. And we couldn't be pulling off these large venue events without their help, as well as the firefighters and EMTs who are stepping forward to assist. So I just wanted to publicly commend them and to bring their efforts to your attention. And then here's the shocking news. October, we had 63 positive cases. In November, 123. And then Joe Korea just texted me, as of the middle of December, 15th of December, we have 151 cases in the month of December. So we potentially could more than double what we saw in November, which was a doubling of what we saw in October. So the more emphasis we put on testing, testing is really all we can do at this point, public education and testing and alert individuals that they're positive so that they can take the appropriate action, especially when they're asymptomatic and they don't know that they're spreading the, the virus. So just as a quick public safety announcement, the 23rd of December, which is a Wednesday from 1:00 to 7:00 PM, we'll be back at the elementary school gymnasium with a rapid testing clinic for town residents. This will give them a sense of what their personal status is leading into the Christmas holiday, and we hope as many people as possible come up and take advantage of that free COVID testing. That you gentlemen have made a priority by dedicating as much COVID money as you have, the CARES money. Mr. Chairman, just the nasal swab test, the 3,052 tests at $75 per test is, I have the number somewhere, $228,000 from your COVID bucket just for the nasal swab test. And those have resulted in an awful lot of Akushnet people finding out they're positive when otherwise they wouldn't have known it.
Hey, Chief, can I, can I ask you a quick question before you continue?
You sure can. I'm done.
No, you're not. December 23rd, 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM, sir?
Correct. The school will be empty. The students and staff are out of there at noon time. So this will be similar to what we did the day before Thanksgiving. For six hours, we'll have staff there and we'll test as many people as show up.
Alright, sounds good. And Chief, I, I'd just like to repeat what you said. Thank you to everyone that's involved in this COVID testing here in our community. It's truly a phenomenal outreach that what you've done, your leadership has done in this town to get all these people on board, continue testing on a weekly basis. And I couldn't agree with you more. If we weren't testing, our, our number of positives or a number of cases, I should say, would be through the roof, not identifying those asymptomatic individuals. So congratulations and thank you all, EMTs, paramedics, firefighters, EMA, as Mr. Gallagher has noted, always stepping up to the plate, volunteering their services, no matter what it is that we're doing in the community. We have a great volunteer EMA department. And Ms. Sylvia for stepping up to the plate to help out this good cause is truly commendable, and I, and I thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I believe what Ms. Hebert and I need to talk to you about is a continuation of the testing program. Unfortunately, the money, the CARES money disappears on December 30th. I've less, a bolt of lightning hits Washington DC and the folks down there get to work. The FEMA is covering 75% of our testing costs and CARES was covering 25%. With the CARES disappearing, we're going to need to make up that 25% before Washington provides us with a, a second round of stimulus money. We can hope that that happens, but I think we need to start planning for what level of testing does the town want to continue in the dark days of winter, when we may need to come up with a 25% copayment that, you know, chances are they're gonna do the right thing. They'll be late to the dance, of course. But it would be helpful if we started preparing for January 1st and testing thereafter in the event that the federal money is slow in, in being finalized.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Hebert and I had a little discussion wrapped around this, and we talked a little bit. I said, "Well, can we, the Board of Selectmen, approve the expenditures now before that deadline ending for testing and carry, say, we approve X amount of tests, call it 2,000, 3,000, whatever the number may be?" And is that money good as long as it's been appropriated before the December 30th and allow the town some flexibility with that for payment of the test to go out into January, February, perhaps even further, depending on how many tests we perform? Is, is that suitable for what we're doing?
I think it's important for the board to authorize us to continue after December 30th, especially knowing that the CARES fund technically dries up. The, the good news is, you know, we'll have a bill that's due to pay the lab in early January for all the tests that we've run in December. We could continue to run the tests in January, knowing that the bill will come to us in February. We can roll the dice that, you know, Washington gets its act together and that we have more CARES money to be able to apply. But in the event that they don't, you know, we need to also kind of publicly discuss the fact that they might not do that. Where's that 25% gonna come from if we continue? So there's a, there's a leap of faith. I'm frustrated beyond words because I see the benefit of this program every day. You know, these are the, the 20 people that I called starting Sunday night to give them a heads up that they were, that they tested positive so that they could do the right thing, not send their kids to school, not go to work, not go to, you know, grandma's house. And they're doing that. God bless the people of Akushnet. When I call them, they, they say, "What do you need us to do?" And we, Joe and I explain to them the quarantine and what efforts they should take, what the follow-up will be with the doctor and the state. But, you know, it's your local level of government that's getting to them within minutes sometimes of the test being made public, publicly accessible by them. So we, the goal of this whole program was to cut down that lag time between the test result being available and them being notified by someone. And that is where the real benefit of this program is happening. Just, you know, the last two days, well, Sunday night and early Monday morning before 8 o'clock, 20 people were contacted. The results came back positive, do the right thing, and they are. And that's what we want to see continue.
Okay. So Chief, Julie, either or, again, will the cost, if we, if we approve, I mean, you still have money, Chief, from your prior approval for testing? Or if we make appropriation to whatever it may be for testing, if we get that approval, is that submittable through the next few months because we appropriated that money from CARES Act? Or no? Are we just all in all by ourselves after January 1st?
So I'll take it. So we have to put in the order, and we can do a 60-day supply order on December 30th, say. But any of the administrative costs, either at the facility with the vendor or on with our personnel, wouldn't be covered by CARES after, after December 31st, essentially. So that's what we would be needing. But yeah, we can, we can buy a 60-day supply. They're not gonna check, I don't think, to say, "Oh, you, it was more than a 60-day supply." They're looking on average, "Does this look like something that's reasonable?" And that's for CARES. FEMA will continue to cover the costs at 75% beyond, you know, January. But it's just that 25% cost and it's administrative only.
So Julie, if I could, if I could just put a finer detail to that. The antibody and the rapid test, we can pre-purchase. The PCR test that goes to the lab, we have invoiced after the test is processed. So we, we can't pre-pay that. And that's the big one. That's the 3,052 that we've administered so far.
Yeah, well, that's because the rapid test has just become available. Is that correct? Like in the last 20 days, 30 days?
Right. And we're not doing the rapid test at every community event because of mechanics. We need to be inside to do that.
Okay.
A large scale.
So Chief, what are you looking to do come the new year? What is your preference to the board?
It, I think, I, you know, I've got, call me naive, but I have some faith that probably once the Georgia Senate election is behind us, that the Congress will do the right thing and make some funds available to communities once again. I think we should roll the dice. But I also want to, you know, alert you to the fact that we may be coming hat in hand for a reserve fund transfer to cover that 25% expenditure if, you know, Washington fails us.
Yeah, Chief, I mean, I asked Julie for some payroll numbers, but I, I think, I don't know if it really matters at this point. I mean, we can order the, the rapid test and the antibody test and get that covered, that whole expense covered. And then we're really just looking at the PCR testing from the lab, that's like 75 bucks per test, right? And then, and then 75% of that's covered, and we, the townspeople, would be on the hook for the 25% of that $75 plus whatever amount. plus whatever amount of money in payroll, twenty-five percent again. So, I mean, if you had a hundred thousand dollars in payroll over three months, twenty-five percent of that is twenty-five grand. If you use the same amount of numbers for the amount to administer the test, it's another twenty-five grand. Look, I think I think that we're kind of in a position that we, the Town of Akushnet took that leadership role in getting tested and administering these tests via our staff, in-house staff, and we've done a phenomenal job of doing it. I'd hate to break that link in that chain at this point and let it all reverse, right? I mean, even though there's a vaccine coming and we can hear about all of that, I'm not that hopeful that that's going to be in effect until maybe June of next year. So with that said, gentlemen, I'll turn it over to either one of my colleagues to to ask some questions, discussion.
Last last questions, Mr. Chairman, but I think, you know, Chief Gallagher, first off, hats off to you and the team, outstanding work. And you've been very generous in your praise of the Board of Selectmen. But, you know, it's easy to make things a priority when it's really not your money. It was a grant money. It's the work, you know, implementing is really what comes down to. And that said, it's now become, it's a priority, right? So it's a priority September through December with somebody else's money. It needs to be a priority January through whenever with our own money. So I agree with Mr. Gasper. I would just, again, without getting into monkeying around with logistics, if there's an opportunity to utilize some town buildings with satellite locations for the rapid testing, you know, like we've got the Grange, we've got the Council on Aging, I don't know if that becomes too much of a difficult thing to utilize different locations on a Saturday to be able to do the rapid testing. You know, it is a cost and a peace of mind thing. I just throw that out there, not as something you have to act on by any means. But, you know, to be as resourceful as possible, that said, I think we we got to make it a priority and that's what that's what we do. So I'm on board with what you what you've come up with.
Yeah, I have a question. What's left in the CARES Act money? What are you asking for, Chief? I mean, what what's the situation there? And also, I'd just like a quick explanation. When we get reimbursed, we pay the seventy-five dollars and then in the future we get reimbursed the seventy-five percent from FEMA?
Yes. So so, yeah, so we for FEMA, we have to spend first and then apply for reimbursement. And FEMA FEMA has been the difficult one to work with throughout all this. This is kind of outside of their normal zone because typically they're dealing with, say, a hurricane and a incident that lasts, you know, forty-eight hours. So they can target the amount of money and the time period and, you know, get the money out to people and have the applications. And this is continuing still. So they've been, it's been difficult to kind of pinpoint what's going to be covered and what's not. And essentially, they threw everything out the window and they're only really covering P P E for for emergency personnel only at this point and testing. So FEMA, yeah, will spend it first. They'll reimburse us to answer that question. For CARES, what we have left in total, we're looking at between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's a little higher than what we originally had planned because we didn't know that the testing would be covered, that the chief has done. And so far FEMA has said that they're covering it at seventy-five percent. So that opened up a little bit, a little bit of extra money for us in CARES. So we have a decent amount left to work with through the end of this month. And again, anything the chief spends at this point is is still only hitting twenty-five percent for CARES. So.
So you're asking for the one fifty? Is that what we're talking about? This is what we're going to use the rest of the money for?
I don't think the chief could spend the rest of the money at twenty-five percent. I mean, I think, yeah, any anything that the chief can get through the end of the month is obviously on the table. We're looking at, you know, especially if we have another meeting before the end of the month. If there's anything else, I've reached out to department heads to see what other items people might need. You know, hopefully, if there's anything that comes up, we can have another meeting and the selectmen can authorize that. Chief and I, you know, vaccines are coming up and I don't know if that's something that we're going to look at as a town as well. So we'll kind of have some discussions over the next two weeks and see if there's anything that CARES could help us fund for that. But, um, yeah, we're, it's the it's the crunch time and a lot of towns are going through this too, where CARES is up soon and there's money left to be spent.
Right. Very good then. Okay, answering my questions.
Hey, hey, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Would it be easier for the Board of Selectmen just to say, take whatever means necessary to accomplish the goal from now to December thirtieth?
From now to December thirtieth, I think we have a plan. It's January first to January thirtieth that we're.
I mean, outside, I didn't mean that. I mean, as far as expenditures of CARES Act money, that's the conversation piece, right? Mr. Wonar and myself and Mr. DeRoche, I believe, is all on board with continuing that program into the future, right? We can't stop it now. That would be just foolish, right? So what we're, what I'm saying now to you, Chief, is order whatever you need to order before December thirtieth. Get as much in as you can to qualify for those expenditures. Let's get that under our belt and and it minimizes the impact to the taxpayers come January, February, March. Whatever it may be, we'll exhale what we need to exhale and we'll do, this board will do whatever it takes to make it right.
Very good.
And if I can add into, I know, second guess, but you asked about the payroll. To date, I had payroll numbers run for what we've spent on CARES for, you know, running all the testing. And it was about thirteen thousand dollars. So, you know, twenty-five percent, and that's over, you know, say, yeah. That's over, I say, two and a half months. So you're not you're not looking at major costs, say, like up to, for the twenty-five percent coverage, two thousand dollars a month at most.
I know. That that was my point, Julie, right? I'm trying to figure it out for the chief to make his job a lot easier. Take down the tension in his mind and everybody else's mind. It's business as usual. As long as my board agrees to business as usual when it comes to testing, and I believe Selectmen won't outweigh it in on that. I don't know if anything's changed between now and then, but gentlemen, has anybody, anything changed? I mean, the numbers, the numbers are not what the numbers are. Public health is what's most important, in my opinion.
I'm on board. Excellent. Do we need to make a motion or?
Selectmen Won, I, you agree?
Yeah, totally. Yeah. I mean, this is, I just said that. I'm on board.
Get it done. We'll 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 talk. We'll talk in January. We'll figure out the logistics of everything. But continue the programs that you've been doing in the last several months. It's it's awesome. I I mean, we're escalating in testing. You can approve it by mass website. You look at it. Some municipalities are really pathetic. The numbers are very tiny and we're doing everything we can to protect our our public's health and well-being. So great work and continue the great work and whatever you need to do. Load it up before December thirtieth and do what you need to do and we'll speak again come the new year and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the expressions of confidence in the team and happy holidays to all of you gentlemen. Thank you.
Very good. Happy holidays.
Mr. Chair, can I add? Under CARES, just one other request that I did receive. It's not a large request. The Council on Aging, they're really grateful for the outdoor space that was authorized for them. They've actually continued to have programs outside. The seniors are having various programs in that outdoor space, even as it's been getting cold. Ms. Sylvia Sylvia had asked if she could purchase a heater for the outdoor space and looking at some quotes, it wouldn't be more than two thousand dollars to heat the space. But they're still out there right now. I'm sure the snow is going to stop them. But at least if they have that, they can keep doing their outdoor programs. Hopefully, you know, whenever it warms up in the spring and and that's the that's the last request I had. Again, it's not too much money, but they're looking to see if they could have a heater for the outdoor space.
Yeah, they only need one, not two?
Well, I'll work with Jim and with Chief Gallagher, obviously, having a B N outdoor heater. But, yeah, we'll we'll find out whatever will work best.
I I went by and seen what we had built out there, Mr. Merritt and the and the two young boys out there. It's it's great stuff. So, I mean, if they need to, it's a pretty decent sized area. And I know the outdoor heaters would wind blown and things like that if they need to. So be it, gentlemen. Is there a motion to approve the expenditures of in the amount of five thousand bucks? We'll just throw that number on it, Ms. Hebert? From the CARES Act for two two heaters, up to two heaters for the Council on Aging?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Ms. Hebert, before I go on to license renewals?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, on the new business, we have annual license approvals. I can I can read through the list, gentlemen, unless one of you guys want to read through it. But I'll start with Common Vic licenses. Country Whip, eleven seventy-three Main Street, Seafood Hut, two South Main Street, Rochelle's, five ninety to five ninety-four Main Street, Pop Casey's, one forty-one South Main Street, T C Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, one fifty South Main Street, Jeffrey's Pizza, one sixty-one South Main Street, The Bill, one fifty-six South Main Street, Captain's Place, one sixty-two South Main Street, American Legion, seventy-one Hope Street, Cam's Cuisine, one thirty-two Main Street, Century House, one oh seven South Main Street, Blue Point Restaurant, six Dayton Street, Blue Land Cafe, six oh five Main Street, they're good to go, gentlemen. I know it says, hold on your paperwork. They came in today. V F W. Number seventy-two, thirty-nine, twenty-eight Roosevelt Street, Ponderosa, two forty-two Robinson Roads, Rivers End Cafe, seven and a half Tocken Hill Road, Keats Orchard, eleven forty-nine Main Street, Akushnet Creamery, two sixty-four Main Street, All Alcohol Club, American Legion, number two sixty-five, seventy-one Hope Street, V F W. Seventy-two, thirty-nine, twenty-eight Roosevelt Street, All Alcohol License, Cam's Cuisine, one thirty-two Main Street, Captain's Place, one sixty-two South Main Street, Century House, one oh seven South Main Street, Blue Point Restaurant, six Dayton Street, Blue Land Cafe, six oh five Main Street, Rivers End Cafe, seven and a half Tocken Hill Road, Ponderosa, two forty-two Robinson Road, Akushnet River Valley, six eighty-five Main Street, All Alcohol Beverage Package Store, Scuttlebutts, five ninety South Main Street, Chuck's Liquors, two, one seventy-two South Main Street, Barnville's Market, one forty-two South Main Street, Town Town Wines, I think it's supposed to be Town Line, but Town Wines, One Middle Road, Jason's Variety, two seventy Main Street, Restricted Music, American Legion, seventy-one Hope Street, V F W. Twenty-eight Roosevelt Street, Cam's Cuisine, one thirty-two Main Street, Captain's Place, one sixty-two South Main Street, Century House, one oh seven South Main Street, Blue Land Cafe, six oh five Main Streets, Rivers End Cafe, seven and a half Tocken Hill Road, Ponderosa, forty-two Robinson Road, American Legion, number two sixty-five for Automatic Amusement, seventy-one Hope Street, V F W. Number seventy-two, seventy thirty-nine, twenty-eight Roosevelt Street, Blue Land Cafe, six oh five Main Street, Rivers End Cafe, seven and a half Tocken Hill Road, Ponderosa, two forty-two Robinson Road, Class Two License, Used Car, Rep. Rep World Corp. I thought there would be a hold on this one. I think there's a hold on this one, gentlemen. White's Auto, two eleven Middle Road, Hayes Street Realty, three Hayes Street, Ted's, three oh eight Middle Road, South Coast Premium, one twenty-seven South Main Street, Charmott Auto, one eighteen South Main Street, Murray's Auto Sales, seventy-five Lambert Street, South Main Street, Enterprise, I would have to imagine that stands for, sixteen South Main Street, Class Three Junk, Raised Sales and Service, four Morton Lane, LaCock Auto, twelve forty, twelve fifty-six Main Street, Fred's Collision, thirty-six Slocum Street. Is there a motion to approve, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
So sixteen South Main Street.
Yes, sir.
Exactly where that.
I believe that's, I believe that's, that's, I believe it's custom auto.
Oh, it is. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. What's the property on South Main Street across from the mobile home area? It looks it looks rather unsightly. What is that? Is that an authorized dealer or is that part of this situation here?
I don't, I don't, I don't see it, Selectmen Won, because the address would have to be just after sixteen, right? If if custom is six.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, I don't know if there was some permit associated with that property, but I don't know how you guys feel. I think it's really unsightly. It's unfair to those neighbors over there. I don't know who owns it. I mean, I'll do the due diligence, but I think we we should really try to approach the the owner of that property and see if there's some way that they'd consider putting some fencing or or something that cleans that area up. It's really unfair to the people who live in that area. So I just want to make sure now we're not permitting something that's on that's a problem.
Yeah, Selectmen Won, I couldn't agree with you more on that. If you if you don't mind, can you check with Mr. Merritt to see what kind of issue to that? It is, I think it's just, I don't know, I think that's commercial zoned over there, but I don't know what that entails. So if you want to do some looking into that, that would be great. So I, is there a motion to approve as read?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great Animal Shelter. The Animal Shelter for Lakeville Approval Agreement. It's a letter addressed to myself, Mr. Gasper, at the meeting in December of two thousand twenty. The Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be discussing the renewal of the contracts for the towns that utilize the Lakeville Animal Shelter for housing stray and surrendered dogs. I have attached the proposed contract for the Town of Akushnet for your review. None of the terms have changed. Ms. Hebert, there's no revised copies with the terms that have changed, are there?
No, there were no changes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. And the next Hamlin Street Bridge Order of the Taken. Gentlemen, I'm not going to go through the whole thing and read all of this. I checked with Ms. Hebert and Town Councils. Gone through it all to make sure the parcel IDs in the Schedule A. So we're doing one, two, three, four, five. Five taken's, one, two, three of them are temporary, two of them are permanent. I have a motion. I move that the Board approve and execute the Order of Taking, acquiring the easement interest for the Hamlin Street Bridge Improvement Project as authorized by town meeting and direct town council to record the Order of Taken and other relevant documents with Bristol County Bristol South Registry of Deeds. Roll call vote. Selectmen Won?
Yes.
Selectmen DeRoche?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All set, Ms. Hebert, on that one?
Yeah, all set. Thank you.
All right. And we got some, the next item on the agenda is golf capital. So it looks like from golf management, I don't know if we have anybody coming in, Ms. Hebert. Did you talk to anybody on this or?
Yeah, we sent it to them. I'll follow up right now, but we can pass over if they're not here.
Gentlemen, do you have, I mean, they got the breakdown of the expenditures. The only the only question I was going to ask, Mr. Flynn or Mr. Isaac, if they were here, is there was an appropriation at the previous town meeting as well? And I think Ms. Hebert can touch on that. They have an outstanding article that's been floating out there with some expenditure, some money that's still remaining in that account. So I didn't know where they would be taking this money from. I know they just did a new article at the previous town meeting we just did. I forget what the total amount was. I think it was like sixty-five thousand bucks or whatever. This comes out to fifty-two, two oh six. Neither here or there, we can work that out. Ms. Hebert can work that out with the with the golf committee to allocate those expenditures. Ms. Hebert, I think it would be in preference that we we get rid of older articles first. The expenditures, get rid of that zero line of articles and then start anew in the new article. So, gentlemen, you don't have a problem with taking that course of action?
Not at all. Not at all.
So, I mean, they went through this, replace a fourteen-year-old CM Pro mechanical rake and the amount of twenty-two thousand eighty-five bucks. Replace a grass blower for eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five, purchase green laser for geese control, three thousand. Contracts, removal of two oak trees on hole number three, three thousand. Purchase new fertilizer spreader for six thousand five hundred and thirty-six and purchase components to add twelve new sprinkler heads to the irrigation system for ninety-three hundred bucks. The only thing that, Ms. Hebert, if you can contact Mr. Flynn, it says contract removal of two oak trees on hole number three, maybe our D P W. Can do that for them as they're always doing pathways, paving pathways and stuff like that. So maybe there's a chance that our D P W. Can do it with their equipment for little to no cost. If not, they can go ahead and do the expenditure as presented. Is there a motion, gentlemen?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, that came in late, gentlemen, is a reserve fund transfer for the Historical Commission. The amount requested will be used for the following reasons. The oil tanks are rotted and need to be replaced. The committee. The committee requested three quotes and we have the lowest bidder. So they're requesting $4,490. I do have the three quotes in front of us and they are in, in line with it and they're looking to, um, I guess this building has three oil tanks or maybe two and then one somewhere else. Um, it doesn't, Historical Commission, it doesn't say what building it's located at.
Long Plain Museum.
Yeah, it says Long Plain Museum. I was unaware, gentlemen, that we have three tanks there, but if they're saying they need three tanks, oil tanks replaced, it is what it is, though, it's a reserve fund transfer. Is there a motion to approve the amount of $4,490?
So moved.
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And next we have, uh, Department of Public Works and we have Ms. Silver here. And that's it, Ms. Silver's here from the Department of Public Works to discuss, um, several items. She's got, um, five, six things to discuss with the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Silver, welcome.
Thank you, hello, good afternoon. I am actually going to do the first two, uh, first four, Mr. Chairman, and then Mr. Manard is sitting to my left, he'll take over from there.
Okay.
Yep, so I just want to go over a few things I kind of need to close out. Um, the first one being the CWMP. Um, the CWMP, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan and the Single Environmental Impact Report, which are all inclusive in one. That report, uh, we've been looking at for years now, was finalized in July. The holdup was the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency had a lot of follow-up that they wanted, uh, myself and Woodward and Carmen to do with them before they approved it. We did receive their approval in October. And so at this point, we need the board's approval so that we can file it with the DDP. This will be a plan for the next 20 years going forward.
Yeah, so, gentlemen, I, I had a conversation with Ms. Silver. Um, and it looks, the biggest part, Ms. Silver, correct me if I'm wrong, in, in the, um, sewer division rules and regulations, the biggest part of that is Article 12 that was added for the land use controls, wastewater flow management added into it.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah, that's the only thing, we, we updated that. And then they referenced the superintendent and where Dan is a director. We switched everything to say director, just to be in line.
And gentlemen, just so you are aware, um, the Board of Public Works in previous years, including the years since the Board of Selectmen took this over, we use an attorney, David Garretowski, um, a fine, fine young man, does great work. He's been involved with our water and sewer infrastructure now, Ms. Silver, for over a decade anyway, right?
Yes, he was in, well, he came in with, before my time, to do the original sewer extension and worked with, um, the DPW and the Board Health, does a great job.
So he's, uh, he's reviewed this document and gave his seal of improvement. Is there any questions pertaining to the, uh, CWMP or the SEIR from Ms. Silver?
I'm also.
You all set?
This is, this is the, um, Woodward and Curran project that we voted for, that says it's 71-5?
No, this is the one that we've been doing, uh, David, for the past five years. It was, it was about 300,000 we had budgeted, um, that we have, have some money left over and, uh, whatever's left over now will be left over in the account because this is the final report.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was voted on by town meeting in 2016, Mr. De Roche.
Okay.
Um, I was a big proponent of that expenditure. If you recall, we took it out of back tax collections and it never came as a debt exclusion on our taxpayers. So that was great, great news for our taxpayers. Um, and it's finally a final report is what we have here. So is there a motion to accept the CWMP and the SEIR as presented?
So moved.
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen, you and I?
Oh, yes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Ms. Silver, next.
Thank you.
So, I kind of have that bundled into both things, sewer rules and regulations. We kind of just pounce on both of those, Ms. Silver?
Yes, that's correct, so the, the rules and regulations, just as you had just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, um, we did just include the land use controls, which has to be included. That's mostly because when you decide to extend sewer at some point in the next 20 years, that you can get financing, whether it's done in-house or out, that has to be part of our sewer regulations. That's why we updated it.
Very good. And number three, risk and resilience contracts.
So this is the plan we had talked about about two months ago before I went to town meeting that we need to do for the Environmental Protection Agency, a risk and resiliency. Every five years it needs to be certified. We have not done this in the past, so this is brand new. So we're asking to work with Woodward and Curran to get this completed in addition to doing the emergency response plan, which will be due six months after. So right now we have a due date of June 30th, 2021 for the first part. And the second part will be due December 31st, 2021 for the emergency response. The 70,000 or 71,500 will cover both of them.
Is that the final, I mean, we made an appropriation at town meeting for 71,000 or 71,500, but have we had any discussion with Woodward and Curran, is that a final number? Or is it something that they could do better on because they have been the engineering firm of the town and they have a lot of this stuff in their databases that they don't really need to come out and do all of that? That's, that was my question a while ago with you, I think, is, you know, I, I, I think that a firm that's familiar with the town, especially infrastructure like this, I think that they should be, you know, doing it at a better rate than somebody from outside in La La Land that's never reviewed the town of Acushnet have, in, you know, that's part of the problem is we need to use Woodward and Curran instead of going out and getting free quotes as far as good management practices go. That's what we'd be doing because of time constraints, we're kind of stuck here. Is, have you had any conversation, Ms. Silver, with Woodward and Curran? Is it the final number, 71-5, or can they do a better number than that?
So I did go back and ask them that question and they did come back with a price of $60,000, but then they would take out doing the ERP training, which is part of the requirement. We would have to find another way to get the training in-house. And they would take out the actionable recommendations and cost estimates based on the risks identified in the water system assessment. So that's another part that they would take out and they wouldn't do it, that I would have to do on my own. And then they would be 60,000.
It, it's not worth the $11,000.
To take it out, no.
If they keep taking things out, I mean, that's not a complete project, that wasn't really, you know, part of the question is, can you do all of this for a better price? Be, instead of just saying, hey, we're used to being a town's engineer and we can charge whatever we want because they ain't going out to bid. And that's my problem with, with that business practice is we should be in that habit of going out to bid and getting other bids for things that are contract services. I know it's not required in the procurement law, but I think in the best interest of our taxpayers, our water users in this particular instance, um, it would be a good practice for us to continue down the road.
Oh, I 100% agree with you. I think our, our problem now is that we're under a tight deadline. This is something that probably should have went out two years ago and went out to bid.
Okay.
But in the, in the future, yes, I agree 100%, we should go out to bid for these items.
Okay, hopefully in the future, the Board of Selectmen will see this stuff earlier. I think that this was given to a former town administrator and just never made it to the Board of Selectmen. Is that correct?
That's correct, I brought it to their attention a little over two years ago because I knew it was coming down and I couldn't scream loud enough, I guess, but I will from now on, I'll be louder.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Silver, is there a motion to approve as presented?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just had one quick question.
Sorry, Mr. De Roche.
Not a problem, the, um, the, the contract does state though, that, that they can, it appears that if they exceed the fee, then, you know, they'll bill us without prior approval of the town. So, I, I just want to make sure this is a fixed fee of 71-5 because then the next sentence says the fee will not be exceeded without the prior approval of town. So, they don't foresee it going over 71-5, I mean, this is the number.
I've worked with them in the past, David, many, many times, and they've never gone over budget. I would not allow that and I should be able to take on some of this work myself. So if something came up and they needed additional things done, I can, I did that with the CWMP and I can do that with this.
Cool, very good, so, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve? Did we do that already, gentlemen? No?
No, no, um, motion to approve.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, number four, recycling issues.
This is the last thing I want to talk about and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Manad, but this is just real quick, I wanted to thank the selectmen because every time I come to you all with my crazy recycling ideas of how we're going to get everybody to recycle better, you have never said no. You've always supported everything we've tried to do in this office to get the recycling better. And the reason we work, we pushed so hard is we were at 18.2% contamination rate a few months ago. And then that was costing us between 1,200 and 1,200 dollars a month extra because we were over the contamination rate. I am so happy to say that the town of Acushnet, the residents, have done an amazing job and they are now at 9.5% contamination rate, which is below the amount that needs to be at. So that contamination rate and, and dollar amount of 1,200, 2,100 dollars a month is gone. It's gone, I'm so excited. Getting, yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for supporting what we're doing here, but also to say thank you to the residents for really taking the time to, to recycle better and, and take those plastic bags out because that was 90% of our problem.
And I'd like to take a minute to thank you, Ms. Silver, and Anne from the office as well because I don't know how long ago it was, now maybe six months ago, maybe nine months ago, but I was driving around town and I happened to see two ladies driving around in a green DPW truck and I'm like, what the heck's going on here? And I happened to stop off and it was you two, um, ladies walking around and, and tagging people's bowels and doing your own inspections to make the town of Acushnet a better recycling community. And that's pretty commendable for two office girls to get out in the street and start doing that job. Um, I, I don't know where else that's, that's being done. Um, so thank you for your efforts, um, especially coming from a non-resident and being an employee of the town, for you to take that initiative, Kath, with Anne was pretty commendable. So thank you very much for doing that and making us better.
Thank you, thank you, we'll probably do it again in the future. We actually enjoyed it, we got to talk to a lot of residents, so it was, it was definitely worth the effort.
I know there wasn't all smiley faces at you because, when you got some of those faces, so. But, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to have Mr. Manad step in. Gentlemen, I appreciate everything.
You bet. Hey, good afternoon, Dan.
How we doing? Good evening.
How are you, Mr. Manad?
Good, very good. Um, just wanted to go over a few issues with the, uh, snow plow things, give you guys a little heads up where we're at. Um, in the past, we had 30, um, hired plows to do, we got 10 roots roughly in town and some roots got three, some roots got four on them. And, uh, this year we're down to 17. It's just seems like it's depleting every year. Uh, last year we had like 21, I think, sign up. And now this year we only had 17. And even this year, we, you know, we put it out online and everything and we, we got a couple new hires, but, um, we had a couple new ones last year and what happens with them, you call them, you don't know if they're going to show up in ours, so I just wanted to kind of give you guys a heads up on that. Um, we're going to do the best we can with what we have and, um, you know, I'm just want to let, it might take a little longer and the residents might take a little longer to get the job done. Um, you know, because we've just got, you know, minimum staff and I kind of want to let the board know about that. And maybe something the board can think of maybe in the future, um, if we could do maybe like a, a sign-on bonus that you give at the end of the year to maybe just give some of the plow drivers some incentive. Um, just talking with these, some of the guys that are out there, they've been kind of letting me know that it's not really worth it for them to kind of, you know, be set up and blades and this and that and, you know, the time and the fuel out there. Um, you know, if they break a cutting edge, it's $500, they make $600 for the night, you know, you, you're working for $100, you know, and then you take your fuel out of there and everything else, so. Um, you know, that's the thing I'm getting off the drivers that are not coming back, you know, says they're not worth it to them, so it's just something for the board to think about. Um, I don't know if it's something we can do or whatever, but that's just a thought. And I figured I'd let it out there to you guys.
Hey, Dan, have you, um, have you had any, I, I know the board had a policy several years back, I don't know how long this went back, but you have a policy where eight-inch blade is minimum?
Eight foot, eight foot, yep.
So, having this shortage, you know, would it be a good idea? I mean, if, if we could find guys out there with seven or seven and a half to run shotgun to want parallel to one of our other vehicles where your blade ain't necessarily needed to be that big? Um, would that be acceptable? Is that something you'd be willing to look by in order to grab some more of these snow plow drivers?
Oh, oh, yeah, definitely, I would definitely take a seven and a half foot and a hot be. This is like some smaller streets we can put them on too. Um, again, they're not, they won't be as good as in like a heavier storm, but you can use them. I, I ain't throwing out anybody at this point, uh, Mr. Gasper, just because it's hard getting anybody, you know? So, uh, any plow would help us at this point, you know?
Yeah, I, I just figured we, you always see our guys going up and blasting out the center of the road and then you have one running shotgun parallel to and a half a blade, really using half a blade to, to hit that side and then they come back down the other side and do it again. So, um, that secondary plow in order to say, oh, we'll only accept an eight-foot blades for a six-inch difference, really? I think that, I, I think that guy's capable of doing that job too. Maybe it would make a change, maybe it won't, Dan, but it's something for you to consider and, and having that little waiver ability to say, I'm not worried about it, I'll take you on as a driver.
Correct.
And hopefully in the future, we'll have autonomous vehicles and we'll just be able to stick plows on vehicles and we won't need drivers. Mr. De Roche?
Yeah, Dan, what's the compensation rate for the driver in the truck that we offer?
Um, we're actually offering, um, state rates, um, right now. So the lowest one is, I think, $73 and some change, and then it goes by GVW as they go up. So the smaller, the, the minimum one is 73 and some change an hour for the plow.
And that'd be for like a pickup with a seven and a half foot?
Yeah, correct, yeah. Right now it's eight foot, but most pickups, most, even a half-ton pickup's got an eight-foot blade. Anything smaller would be, you know, have a seven and a half foot blade. And, and again, this, the, the only difference with a smaller blade, it's, it just don't get the weight to push the heavier snow, which again, he, like Mr. Gasper says, I can always put them up at the front, put the heavier truck in the back, I'm willing to take on any blades, tell you the truth, but, um, we, we haven't had any, you know, too much interest at all, you know? So, and again, it seems like it's just depleting every year.
Right, right. With less snow, last year we didn't have very much snow.
Yeah, last, last two years actually, so, again, so they're not making no money and a lot of people just thinking it's not worth it to, to sign up and, you know.
I just bought my new Ram pickup truck and it's, it's 600 a month, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing is, it's, we're not the only town, far be it from us, it's, uh, my brother's town of Wayham, he's down 30 blades because town Wayham's bigger, they usually got 70 and he's, he actually a little less, it's a little more than 30, he's got 37 signed up, you know? So he's, he's a little less than half two as well, so. And I'm sure all the towns and I see the state has their sign up and they're always looking for people as well, you know? So it's, it's, it's all around, you know, so I just figured to let you guys be aware of that.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Surplus property, Dan, I think is one that you have, I think it's the old used paving machine that we originally bought a few years back?
That's correct. So, um, what happened with that, Mr. Gasper, was, um, when we, when we purchased the new paver, it was, they were originally going to take this as a, uh, you know, um, take some money off of this one, but, um, they didn't, because we had the rental, we rented the, the other paver, so they want to take it, he didn't want to take that money and give us money for our old paver, so they wound up giving us the, the money for the rental, which was $10,000, which was off the new one. So we have this one now, so I'm looking to surplus and then try to, either get it out there on, uh, you know, Facebook or eBay or paper or whatever we got to do to try to sell this and get some money back for this one.
Dan, what, what do you think the weight of that paver is?
Um, I know our new one is 21,000, that one's definitely less than that, so it's maybe about 14,000 pounds, maybe? 12, 14,000.
My only comment is, I wouldn't want to sell it for $500 if I can scrap it and make $2,000, right?
Oh, I agree, I agree. And again, I don't know if it's even, uh, uh, I think we could maybe surplus it now, Mr. Gasper, but I, we might have to wait till like spring, this is something that maybe would sell in the spring rather than now, you know, coming into winter, you know, maybe we can get rid of this at that time, try it at that time.
I think that a price would need to be determined, I mean, I, again, I hate to sell this thing for 500 bucks if I can scrap it and make two grand, right? That don't, that don't make much sense, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we can figure that number out relatively easy, so what do you want to, what do you want to do, Dan? You want to hold off on this or do you want to just?
Well, I mean, we got to get any surplus so we could do anything anyway, so while we got it, the board can vote at least a surplus it. I think we were going to wait on it before I go to sell it anyway, just regardless, just maybe something in the spring, we can, uh, if it's surplused already, we'll kind of look it down, look into the scrap, I'll look into, and trying to get some numbers, what it's worth, and then we'll put it out there and, you know.
If we happen to get an offer between now and then, we can, we'll come back in front of the board and say, this is what it's worth scrapped, this is what I can get it for and, you know, we can make a decision just to let it go in the wintertime and get rid of it, right?
Correct.
Is there a motion to declare the Neil 9,500 newspaper as surplus?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Minard, you have anything else?
Oh, no, that's it for me. You guys have a Merry Christmas.
You as well, Mr. Minard. Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hebert, town administrators report.
I just wanted to update you on a few grants that we received. The first one, the Back Bay Watershed Grant, we originally applied for two different proposals. Unfortunately, we only got one. I know there was a Lake Street proposal that was put in and that one wasn't funded, but there was a $15,000 grant for land preservation for the permanent protection of land. And that will be the Coalition's land. Let me get the, I'm sorry. I'm missing the, the location right now. But anyway, sorry, we did get that grant, $15,000. There it is, the Trips Millbrook Headquarters area. And I know we did some work over there before preserving land. So this is just another good move for us and for conservation efforts. So we'll, we'll try to reapply for Lake Street if we can, if this comes around again. But in the meantime, we have the, the Trips Millbrook Headwaters Conservation Project, a $15,000 grant.
Ms. Hebert, was this property the Back Bay Watershed Grant? What, that, what does that being used for?
So it's, it's, the location is the Trips Millbrook Headwaters, which is like all the way up the river over near Fairhaven.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, we, we had something recently. We used some funding from CPA, if you remember, to, I think, purchase the property to help with purchasing the property. And this is just adding more money to it to help conserve the area.
Okay.
So. The second update I had, we, we've talked before about the Shared Streets Winter Grant. Just keeping you updated that we're working on the application now. We're looking at the Slocum Street sidewalk area as the, the major project. The application for the second round is due at the beginning of January. So we'll be getting that information to you as soon as we have it. But just letting you know, we're still working on that. And the Stormwater Remediation Program, this is the, we, we received, we were chosen as a project. We talked about this before when we did the Riverview Park project that we got the Shared Streets Grant for the last time. There's a stormwater remediation that is being looked at in that same general area. We were one of 10 locations that were being considered. Ultimately, they chose three locations and we were just appointed as one of the chosen few. So we'll be working with the Back Bay Watershed Group and they're going to help us secure some grant funding to improve that stormwater area. So I know.
Riverview Park?
Yeah, and, and this is the one that, when we talked before, you said, you know, hopefully if we can get another meeting in December to have the group come in and explain what they're looking to do. That's what, that's what we'll be looking for, for this group. So just a, it's something that would be required of us to fix at some point anyways. The fact that we were chosen and we'll be able to get grant funding through them to get it done is a huge bonus for the town.
Okay, great. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Gentlemen, we have a executive session schedules. Is there a motion to go into executive session on the Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21.3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining? Police, Town Hall, Clerical, GPW of an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares not to return to open session. Mr. DeRoche?
So moved.
Mr. DeRoche?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session.